Kind of stopped at the same time.
Kate, would you please call the roll?
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Richard, are there any agenda changes or revisions?
There are none.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge and welcome Steve Griffiths as our new Planning Commissioner. Welcome, Steve. Steve was appointed to fill Sean Kidd's on expired term. Would you like to make any remarks or tell us something about yourself, Steve?
My nephew just recently built a second. Working for 30 years. Ordered in the Bay Area and so. Tiring, I've served for three years as chair of. Member of the. Member of the Open Space Committee. I would like to mention what we're talking about here tonight and say that I will.
We're not.
Ready for that?
Yeah.
About myself.
And you're also a consummate actor.
I'm active in Theater West, too. We currently have a show. Come see it.
Yes, I highly recommend it. It's a fun performance. So, we're going to call for the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. Nominations are now open for Planning Commission's Chair for 2015.
For the Chair, Bruce.
Well, thank you very much.
I think we're going to do these one at a time. Is that correct?
And I would also like to nominate. What's your name?
I don't know.
Nate Long for the Chair position.
You're fine.
Do we get nominations for Chair and Vice Chair or vote first?
Do just do nominations for Chair first. It would be appropriate if there are no more nominations for a motion to close nominations.
If there are.
Nominations?
No, they're just nominations. It's not a motion.
No, we don't have to second a nomination. Any further nominations? Call for a close, a move to close the nominations? Is that correct?
How will we vote on it with two different candidates up?
All those in favor of. Those in favor of the other count.
We can do it by little pieces of paper, too, if you want. You want to do it.
I'm not a big fan of secret ballots.
Okay, okay.
I'll move that we close the nomination process for Chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. Shall we call for a vote? How do we do this?
I just recommend all those who'd like to nominate Nathan for Chair, raise your hand or say aye.
All those who would like to have Nathan Long as Chair, raise your hand or say aye.
That's two.
It's two.
You didn't put your hand up. All those in favor of Bruce Robinson as Chair, raise your hand or say aye.
Was that three?
That was three.
Okay.
Don't hit me later. That's all right.
So I'm the Chair. Nominations are now open for Planning Commissioner, Vice Chair for 2015.
I nominate Nathan Long.
Are any other nominations? Move to close the nominations for Vice Chair?
I move we close the nominations for Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's vote. We don't have to vote, do we?
You should vote. All you have is a nomination at this point.
Okay, let's have a vote for or Nathan Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry? What about it? Our next agenda item will be deliberations on File CPA.
You skipped a couple of things there.
Oh.
Item five.
Where is that?
You're new at this Chair thing, aren't you?
I'm new at this Chair thing. What are we doing next?
Approval of the minutes.
New business. Oh, there we go. All right, let's request for approval of the minutes.
I move a motion or to accept the minutes for. What date was that?
That was.
Approval of minutes for December 16th, 2014.
December 16th, 2014.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments on non-agenda items or matters involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television.
I have the sign-up sheet. Problem is that both individuals signed up indicate they want to talk about the VRD zoning.
Which is closed.
And that hearing was, is closed and the record is closed. It will, of course, have a hearing before the City Council. I'll just say the next item on the agenda is public comments. You can come up and speak of any subject, but it will not be in the record. Land use hearing. If these individuals want their testimony to be in the record of the land use hearing, they need to submit their comments or testify before the City Council. They can come up and talk, but they, it's not in the record of the hearing.
Given that, does anybody want to speak?
When I was here.
Could I have your name, please?
Elizabeth Rogers.
Thank you.
And when I was here last month, I believed that there was a continuance of this conversation that was going to happen tonight based upon the fact that it wasn't rejected nor was it approved. And so, I had thought that I could bring you additional information.
The public hearing is closed. The continuation is, the continuance is a continuation of our deliberations on the testimony and evidence.
And this commission makes a recommendation to the City Council and the City Council will have a public hearing at a future date. It was continued, I don't recall the date.
I understand, but at the point where we were last, last time we met. This. A decision had not been made in order for them to carry it forward to the Council.
That's right, but this body closed the hearing and closed the record. And the only thing that was continued to this meeting was their deliberations on what's in the record and what's in the, what they heard at the hearing.
So during this meeting, will there be any conversation?
These gentlemen are going to discuss and deliberate what they heard at the last, at the hearing and what was submitted in the record and make a recommendation to the City Council. That's, that's the role tonight. There is no public hearing on this item tonight.
Okay, I would like to share a little bit of information that I've gathered from my neighbors who were unable to attend.
You can, you can speak on any subject when you come up to the podium under public forum, but I'm going to tell you that what you give to these gentlemen is outside of the hearing and it creates error. It's not appropriate to give information outside of the hearing process, so. My recommendation would be that you address your comments to the City Council who make the decision on this matter. These gentlemen make a recommendation to the City Council, but this is public forum. I'm not going to tell you, you can't speak for three minutes on any subject.
Choose to read my information. Because the decision that these gentlemen are going to make tonight will be given to the Council for further decisions to be made. So, I shared last month that I live in the residential area. Most of the vacation rentals in the northwest area are located between 26 toward the casino. My, the homes 26 toward 21st are not suitable for vacation rentals. They have no view, they are very small homes, and they are single-family dwellings with full-time residents. There were comments last month about the lack of residential support at the meeting to discuss the issue. I talked to several of my neighbors about the proposed rezoning. Many of them were unaware of the proposal. Several remembered receiving the notice but thought it was in regards to a VRD request in the area and just threw it away without reading it. I talked to others who were surprised that the issue had again been raised. They're tired of dealing with the VRD challenges. Some have no belief in the city leaders and are not willing to keep fighting. I find it sad that the people that pay the taxes and support this community do not feel they any longer have a say as to what happens to their property and their neighborhood. As I stated last month, we are a neighborhood of friends and family who support and care for each other. We are full-time residents who do not want our neighborhoods to be changed and to be a commercial zone. It was stated last month that there are about 360 VRDs in all of Lincoln City currently and only a quarter of them are in the northwest area. The southwest area has the highest number of VRDs. How many VRDs do you want in Lincoln City? In just the northwest quadrant, you are taking 340 residential homes and proposing to make them VRDs. Some people will put their homes up for sale to hope to get out before they are surrounded by the VRDs. As each home comes on the market, investors will claim another family dwelling. I questioned the plan to deal with the northwest area and then move to the southwest area. Obviously, there's a concern that the pushback would be larger than what the city would want to handle. I feel as though we are being slowly cooked so not to, so not to have the alarm go off. Has anyone asked what this action will do to the hotel industry in the area? Why would we invite investors to purchase our residential homes, destroy our neighborhoods, and create mayhem on a weekly basis? As you consider the current recommendation, please remember you have the future of 340 families in your hands. The loss of the dream to retire in a quiet residential community and the many people that will ultimately lose property because they were pushed out. At least 40% of the area has been recommended to be rezoned to small neighbors which are not conducive to VRDs. I am hoping that each of you did your due diligence and drove the area that was shown on the map in the last meeting. Again, I'm not against having VRDs. I and my neighbors just request the area be removed or moved back to reduce to 26 and back toward the casino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, money is obviously cannot be included in the record. If the young lady that spoke would like that information to be in the record, she needs to submit it to the City Council.
Hi, your name?
My name is Martha Watts. I own a resident on Jetty in the area in question. I agree with Ms. Rogers and I did not receive the original information that there was ever a meeting on this again. And it has been going on since 2009. So I find it interesting that this kind of decision that is going to impact the residents that own these properties are not informed that there's a meeting. And now I'm understanding that this meeting, really anything I have to say doesn't matter. But it should matter. And each one of us that lives here in this community, we welcome and people who come here and vacation here. And that's a big part of the money and the income that comes here to this community. But it's the residents that are here year-round that take care of the schools and pay the bonds and pay for everything that happens here. It's not the vacationers. That's seasonal. And it's time that this community takes care of the people who live here instead of lowering the value of their properties yet raising their property tax. That, that's never made sense to me. I pay more property tax now than I did when I bought my home 10 years ago, but the value of my home is even less. It doesn't add up. You guys are pushing residents from this place. Elderly people who come here to retire can't afford to pay their property tax. Now you even devalue our homes even more by taking a whole area and making it vacation rentals. If somebody wants to make their home a vacation rental, let them submit an application like it has been taking place for so long. But to take a whole area and devalue it and then allow people to come in that we don't know who's on our street, we don't know these people. There's something wrong with that. We have vandalism, we have crime in this community. We kind of like to know who our neighbors are. We don't want to be woken up all night long with people partying on our streets or coming onto our property and stealing things out of our yard. I think that you put it on the ballot and you let the people here vote for it. A lot of people aren't here tonight because they didn't know about it. They didn't know about it back in December. I didn't know about it. I'm here tonight to speak up and to say what I think. I pay $12,000 a year in property tax for this community. I think my money counts. I think my vote counts. And I don't think you people who don't live on this street or have property on this street have the right to make a decision for the people that are stuck living there. I wouldn't have bought there had I known that it would be a vacation rental. Wouldn't have done it. Thank you.
I suggest you talk maybe with Kate. If you're not receiving notices, there might be some issue with your address of record. And also, I'd like to say the City Council will be very glad to hear your statement. Thank you. Are there any other speakers who wish to come up and speak on a matter not involving a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. Final orders, resolutions, and written communications scheduled? Our next agenda item will be deliberations on File CPA and ZZ 2014-03, the vacation rental zone for the northwest quadrant of Lincoln City. The public hearing for this matter was opened on December 16th, 2014. The hearing and the record were closed on December 16th and deliberations were continued to tonight's meeting. The Planning Commission's role in this process is to consider any written or oral testimony as well as information from staff and make recommendations to the City Council who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or take other action, including declining to make a decision. Tonight, we will conduct deliberations and arrive at a recommendation to forward to City Council. Because of the time that has passed, I'll ask if any member of the commission needs to declare an ex parte contact conflict of interest or bias in this matter. Any?
We have a new counselor that didn't, or commissioner that did not make a declaration last time, so hear from him.
Yeah, I would like to participate and vote on the matter before. Although I was not present for the hearing, I have reviewed the written materials in the record and I have fully reviewed the tape of the hearing, sections of it more than once, some sections of it more than once. Because I was not here for the ex parte conflict of interest and bias disclosure, I will state for the record that I do not have an actual or potential financial conflict of interest. I have not received any information about this VR's rezoning proposal, ex parte. Although I did visit the area proposed to be rezoned and walked some of it in the last couple of weeks, I did not observe anything other than the property condition as described in the record of these proceedings. While I have participated in VRD matters in the past, I was a member of the consensus group and participated as a citizen in prior land use hearings. I have not prejudged this application and I'm not prejudiced or biased by any potential conflict, prior context, or involvement. I will make this decision based solely on the application of the relevant criteria to the facts and evidence in the record of this proceeding.
Thank you. Richard, does that walking the property constitute ex parte?
It's technically, it's not ex parte, but it is extra record evidence. You're outside of the hearing, you're gathering evidence. Now, it's only important if you observe something when you're out there that's different than what's in the record. So if you were out there and you observed, you know, endangered species and it made, somehow made a difference with the criteria, then you would disclose that and then we'd have to give an opportunity, just like an ex parte, for someone to rebut that factual information. But if your observations are essentially the same as the description in the staff report in the record, then you would just simply, as was just noted, note that your observations were basically reflected by what's already in the record. If, unless you saw something else out there, so.
All right. Shall we accept this gentleman on our deliberations? Thank you. Challenges. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? If a commissioner is challenged for bias, should I, do I read this?
No, you don't have to.
Seeing none.
Essentially, you don't have any bias challenges or any, any other things to do, so you're basically at the point where you ask staff if there's any advice we'd like to give you and help you along here and then you deliberate.
Okay, staff. Is there any advice you'd like to give us?
The only thing I want to say is I've put the map, the proposed map up on the screen here so that you can see it and if you want to talk about specific areas or something,
And some extras as well, up front.
I can see it up there. All I can really say is that the proposal has this kind of, it's involving a lot of properties, kind of has that legislative character because it's involving a significant number of properties. But if you happen to be one of those people, you think of it as not as big legislative thing, you're really just thinking, thinking about your property. And that's why we try to observe the quasi-judicial procedural safeguards of disclosing ex parte and things like that. Because no matter how much we'd like to think of this as a legislative decision, really for, for people whose property are involved, they're very much concerned. We had some comments that are outside the record. Unfortunately, I have to tell you not to include that in your deliberations, although what you heard tonight, you heard at the hearing last time. So you can consider what you heard last time. You don't have to discount what you heard last time. And essentially, there was a concern expressed last time that the proposed rezoning was too big. In the sense that at least one person that testified last time talked about my street doesn't have any VRDs, why is it included? Was this an error? So certainly you can, in making your recommendation, talk about is the size of the proposed rezoning appropriate? Do you need to draw it in? I know we talked last time, there was comments about the RM zone. There was no proposal or advertisement to include RM. So that might be appropriate for a separate motion. Staff, could you go back and look at the RM zone? But that's not what's actually advertised in before you right now. So what we're really looking for is your input and recommendation on the proposed rezoning of these specific properties. Should they be included? Should they not be included? And how does that relate to the criteria and everything discussed in the staff report?
Thank you, Richard.
I'd like to ask a question of staff. Prior to our new regulations that came into effect, how hard was it to get a VRD house put in anywhere in this zone? What was the rules?
Well, there, well, number one, the, there is a proposal before you to rezone property from residential to VR.
I understand.
There is, there was no VR before December and, and that, you know, that's, so it's new.
Right. My question is, how hard would it have been for someone to get a VR license prior to December?
The existing land use process. And it's still, and it's still, that's still the existing process.
Yeah, I'm asking that question. I want to know.
If they meet the criteria, they apply for it, they get it. I don't know what you mean by how hard it is.
Well, okay, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is how things have changed, how the landscape has changed. And basically, what you're, I assume you're telling me is that if, if I was living in this area before and I wanted to make my house a vacation rental, I would have walked down to the office and asked for an application, filled it out, and gotten my VRD.
If you meet the criteria, yes. You had the proper number of parking spaces, the proper landscaping, and so on.
In a residential zone, a VRD is an accessory use. So you could come in and request an accessory use VRD. You could do that today, whether or not this, these properties get rezoned to VR. Okay, the, so if you came in today in a residential zone, you could ask for a vacation rental dwelling. You go through the accessory use process and, you know, you, you could get approval. The difference is, the vacation rental zone was created by the City Council to provide an option for property owners who wanted to rent more than an accessory amount. And what I mean is accessory, accessory is limited. Necessary is incidental and subordinate to the primary use.
And that's, that's a matter of what, 90 days a year or was it 100?
That's actually, it's not a, it is a discretionary land use standard. So if, if I'm going to do an enforcement action against you and you own a VRD and you're renting your VRD 365 days a year in a residential zone, I take you before a hearings board like this body and I say, the standard is, your use of, of the property as a VRD is supposed to be accessory. It's supposed to be incidental and subordinate to your use of the home as your second home.
But if I rent it for 180 days, is that incidental use then?
The argument would be, that's the question asked of the land use decision maker. Now, in, in the case, in a Portland case about what is accessory, the applicant argued that just less than half, 180 days, would, is, is, meets the standard. And the city of Portland said, no, your, actually it was Beaverton, said, no, that that is not what incidental and subordinate means. And in that case, they said incidental and subordinate means a very small amount. So, but there, in our code, we don't have a number. We have a. We have a land use standard and a process. So if I'm gonna, and what the council tried to do was make it a little easier by giving people some options with some numbers associated with them. So if, if you wanted to use your property 365 days a year, you can't do it in a residential zone. If you rezoned to a VR zone, it's a commercial zone, and therefore, you'd be able to.
But it's a commercial zone exclusively for VRDs, it's not for?
It doesn't have hotels, you're right.
And it doesn't have commercial businesses, like a realtor opening up a residential office in that area?
You're right, you're correct. It's a very limited residential zone. It's less intense, or a very limited commercial zone. It's less intense than a recreation commercial, but more intense than a regular single family.
So it's exclusively residential with a VRD inclusion?
Allowance.
It's close to that. It's, any of the uses that are allowed in the R1 zone are allowed in the VR zone, plus vacation rental dwellings 365 nights a year.
Yeah.
There's things that are allowed in the, in the single family residential zone, like schools, hospitals, churches, and so on, that are not strictly residential. So I just want to make sure you understood that.
I, I think you went in a different direction than I was trying to ask the question for. I, let me rephrase this. My question was in the direction of, if I owned a piece of property prior to what had happened in our taking up this new system, and I lived in a residential area, and I wanted to rent my house out as a VRD, what restrictions would I have faced prior to us bringing in the new law?
And the, the answer is, the law has not changed, okay? The way that we regulate vacation rentals has not changed. The existing process is still in place, okay? So if you want to have a vacation rental, you come in, you apply in a residential zone, you come in and apply, you'll get a land use approval. That land use approval is going to ask you, how many days are you planning, nights are you planning on renting? And if you say 365 days, you may very well get denied. And if you s-
Would I have been denied prior to our having a VR zone?
There were, there are instances in the record where people asked for 300-some days and got denied, and then appealed to this body, and then this body sometimes said, yes, it's okay, and then sometimes they said, no.
Okay, 'cause what I'm trying to get at is whether or not a person who has a piece of property out on the other side now can feel like they've actually had property taken from them as a result of our new regulations, you know, because they can't rent their house out 365 days a year. That's, that was where I was trying to get the question answered.
The existing law is that VRDs are accessory uses. Accessory uses are defined as incidental and subordinate to the main use. That's what the existing law is. The council has said to me and to the city manager, enforce the existing law. And what the ordinances that were adopted last year did was provide options and alternatives to property owners to lessen the burden of that enforcement, which is coming.
Okay.
Okay, and gave them a couple of options. One of the options is, you can rezone to a VR if you want to rent more. Another option is, you can agree to settle with us and sign an agreement that says you won't rent more than 180 days. Not because we think 180 days is incidental and subordinate, but because it was a settlement offer, which is actually something you guys recommended, this body recommended, 180 days as a settlement essentially, or a nonconforming, nonconforming use limitation. You would, you had suggested that.
Any further questions? We are open for deliberations, so commissioners, let's deliberate. I know you had, you had some reservations the last time we spoke about the, the size of this project.
Oh, no, that was some, another commissioner was talking the size, because I, he actually was hoping the whole thing would be done at once. I, I'm okay with this process of piecemeal.
Okay, sorry, my mistake.
And I'm wanting to look at all these same types of situations in bulk. Those piecemeal come before us. I was looking at a time-saving factor with that, and more involvement, the community that in mind.
And how do you feel now? Can we go ahead with this approach?
It's, you know, if I'm the only one that's standing alone on it, I'm not going to slow down the process. If anybody else wants to take my position, worth discussion. But if I'm the lone, then I'll go with the rest of the group, and we'll do them one at a time, just whatever pleases the majority of the commissioners.
Any other input, gentlemen?
I would be ready to.
Let's do that.
I think we had some good testimony at the last public hearing week. I can't think of the lady's name, but she's from Pacific Retreats, Dan?
Carolyn Plummer.
I thought Carolyn Plummer brought up some good points, particularly about this area. One, you know, I, I put a lot of validity behind her statements, because she was part of the committee that originally was looking at what we were going to do for VRDs around the city. And I thought she brought up a couple of interesting points. One was about a section on the north, on the south end of this area, that she felt would be used to be our, whereas she really felt that the vast majority of this area should be zoned residential and stay residential. I'm inclined to agree with that position, having traveled through that area quite a bit, and knowing the types of houses that are in there. I think it's a quite proper residential neighborhood, and I can see that I don't want to see if they turn to VR. I'm in the position of denying this request, other than the position on the south. We take it up, I think it was 9th Street, that Carolyn recommended.
That's, that's an RM-zoned area down there.
There was some residential area.
There's nothing south of, I think, 20, or 19th, I think it is. That's zone, single family residential. Let me, actually, I can look at the PowerPoint.
I thought she was referring to an area just to the north of the D River, where Kylo's is, and then coming forward about four or five blocks from that area, is that 6th Street?
She was talking about, if you look on, on the screen, this area here in Brown, and I'm circling, and that's zone, multifamily residential. The single family residential, this is 21st along here, and it goes two blocks south of, the orange area is single family residential, and there's just, it doesn't go below 19th. Single family, or multifamily residential and recreation commercial down here.
Okay, but if I'm looking at that map, I'm seeing a little strip that it looks like would be the intersection, go up to the state parks, that road, and you travel to the, to the west, yeah, your arrows?
In here?
Oh, travel to the west.
Sorry, here.
Yeah. That little bit of section, I think that, that's what she was referring to.
That's what she was referring to. But again, that is not zone, single family residential, so that isn't, it isn't proposed for any changes, and we didn't notice those properties, because it's zoned multifamily residential, not single family.
But there are VRDs in that area.
There are VRDs in there, there's, there are single family houses in there, but it's not, it's not staff's proposal to zone them for, to the vacation rental zone, principally because going from multifamily residential to the VR zone would amount to a downzoning of the property, in other words, reducing the uses that are allowed on that property. If any of the property owners on that, these other properties, the RM-zone properties or any other property in the city, really, if they want to be included in the VR zone, they certainly can ask for it.
Okay, so that area then would not be VRD, that little area that Carolyn was talking about?
It would not be zoned VR. VRDs would be allowed there, continue to be allowed there as accessory uses.
But there's, there's no area in that that's single family residence?
No area that's zoned, single family residential.
And if, if you're interested in pursuing rezoning of RM, you could make a separate motion, it's not part of this, but you could make a separate motion suggesting that staff explore that rezoning. The problem, as Richard pointed out, is that staff considers it to be a downzoning, and so without the applicant's participation, we wouldn't want to do that to people, to lessen the options they have to do multifamily. But if they come in and voluntarily request it, we'd be willing to do that.
This discussion is outside of the area of your preparation tonight.
Yeah, what I, well, actually, if you look at this map, which you had before you the other time, the orange area is the R1-5, single family residential zone. That's the area that is under consideration tonight. Now, the map that you have in front of you at your seat has the blue area, which is the area that staff proposed to be zoned to VR. It's cut off down here at 21st Street, northwest 21st, and I say, there's this two-block area to the south that is bordered by, by commercial zones on three sides of it. And I was, as I said last time, that is something to consider, whether that area should be included in the VR zone. It's not on the map in front of you, and it was really an oversight on my part.
That would be, if we approved this tonight, that would be included?
It, it would not, unless you specifically ask for it to be.
Doug, were there any pieces of this that you felt?
Well, there's some problematic problems here. Trying to think of what the, there's a, I guess, 39th Northwest and Key, which is a looping road. It's 39th and Key, it's that, kind of the looping circle-type roads in there.
Up here?
Uh, no, 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 come down.
Further north, isn't it? Oh, no, sorry.
This is 39th up here.
No, no, well, then I'm reading the map wrong.
This is 39th right here.
You're talking?
28th, or 30th?
Here's 30th.
Okay, 30th is-
And those circle streets in there, I know those are pretty narrow streets.
These? Talking about Oar and Port in this area?
Yeah. Oh, it's the orange.
Right here.
Are you, are we talking about the orange or the blue?
Right, right now-
Present.
Right now, the orange and the blue are both zoned R1, single family residential. The proposal is that the blue area become VR zone.
But I thought we already had VRs in that area.
No. We have, VRDs are allowed there as accessory uses, but the VR zone is not on the ground anywhere in the city. That's what, tonight is, is the first step towards doing that, or this, this process we're going through is the first step towards doing that.
All the orange is still residential.
That's what staff has proposed, that all the orange would still stay residential. It's the blue that would be changing.
But there's existing blue that's already classified as VRD residential.
No, there is no VR zone anywhere in the city right now.
This is a new zone for us.
A new zone was not put on the ground anywhere. What this hearing is about is ultimately putting the VR zone on the ground on certain properties in the northwest, specifically, the proposal is, the ones that are marked in blue.
I thought when we initially did this, and, and I guess I'm going to have to stand corrected, that we took everything that was pretty much on jetty or southwest coast, on the right or on the east or west side, that was going to be VRDs acceptable on our initial proposal.
Those proposals never went anywhere.
I thought the initial was passed by council.
Back several months ago, there was, there was a proposal to, to set certain areas. In fact, if you look, the areas in, there was, there were several different proposals. The area in green on this map is the area that the consensus committee proposed be zoned, basically was, was what they called the yes zone, VRDs would be allowed. The areas in, in the reddish color would be no, and there'd be no VRDs would be allowed there at all. That eventually got, as I recall, it got up to the city council, but they did not make a decision on that, and said, instead, there were concerns about Measure 49 claims for takings and so on, for not putting, for taking, for the no properties, where they currently are allowed to have vacation rental dwellings as an accessory use, they would not be allowed to have vacation rental dwellings anymore. In the face of that, they sent it back to staff. They did not act on, on the proposal. And staff came up with, with some new proposals, and that's what's being brought forward here. So there were hearings at the planning commission, but there was no final action taken by the city council on that.
But then initially, the green zone that we were going to approve included jetty up to, up to, what, Keel?
Um, as I recall, there were some changes. It was, actually, the proposal went much further east, and there were a lot, there was a lot of testimony about possibly changing it. And the, the, one thing is, is staff was concerned about some of, the line had cut some, some properties in half, and we suggested adjusting that. But then other property, other people suggested removing areas, such that this area outlined in yellow here was proposed to be taken out of the yes zone and put into no. This is a slightly smaller area, also outlined in yellow, is proposed to be taken out of the yes and put in no. And then this area was proposed to be taken out of no and put in yes, and so on. Ultimately, you made a recommendation, and then, as I said, the council did not act on that.
Okay, and, and if I take a big, broad look at this, we're narrowing the scope of what was going to be VRD acceptable?
The, the new, the new rules still allow vacation rental dwellings in the R1 zone as accessory uses. What's proposed is, is changing some of the single family residential area to the VR zone, so that VRDs would be allowed to be rented up to 365 nights a year. So it would be the primary use rather than accessory use. It still would be an accessory use in the R1 zone, but it would be a primary use allowed in the VR zone.
My sense of looking at this map is, the blue zone here is very similar to the yes zone that we discussed and approved.
It's similar, there are some differences, the-
I think he-
I'm sorry?
I think Doug said it was narrowing it a little bit.
Narrowed it to some extent, and also, but along the north side of 39th, it ran it all the way across rather than stopping at, partway, basically at Mast, I think. And it moved, the other line moved a little bit further to the, to the west.
There was some- Hearing, I'm reading, looking at the minutes and the concern- Hearing, I'm reading, looking at the minutes, and the concern expressed at that time was the area between 21st and 26th is not oceanfront, is not oceanfront and has no view, and so the testimony was, that was an area where the VR, the homes were smaller and not typical VRD, so why rezone them? And that was just from your minutes here, testimony that you had last night.
So what we're doing tonight is taking this blue zone, we either accept it, or we can tweak it, and do whatever we want with it, or just deny the whole thing.
Right.
That's all we're here to do tonight, so I see some tweaks I'd like to do to it. Like what was in the minutes, what Richard just said, is I agree with that. I know those houses in there, there's, there used to be a VRD in there, one, and then they changed it, it went away. It's a small residential, I see no reason why that should be a VR zone. I mean, if somebody later on down the road wants to apply to change the zoning, they can.
So that, you're describing the area between 21st and 26th?
Correct, on Keel. Because the lots on the Jetty side, east of Jetty, are still gonna be in the blue, but on Keel, the west side of Keel, will not.
So the east side of Jetty still would be, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
So you would take this out between Jetty and Keel?
Right. Just the one side of it.
The one side.
Keel.
Right, right.
Between 21st and 26th? Yes.
Yeah, between 21st and 26th, the west side of Keel, is remove that from the VR zone. I would actually call those in, in the VR zone. I know there's three of them, four of them already there are VRs, are VRDs now, but the whole length down Keel, I mean, that's all small, small homes.
Going up this line?
Yes.
Right there.
Then here, would you just continue the line?
No.
You would include these?
That'd be part of the VR.
Yeah.
And these two?
That'd be part of the VR.
What about these two?
That'd be part of the VR.
The ones that are up against the east-west streets would still be included.
The ones facing south and north would stay VR, everything else facing east would stay R1.
Are you talking, and you're only talking below 25th?
Twenty-sixth.
You're not talking between 25th and 26th?
No, between 25th and 21st. Curiosity, why not the, I guess that would be, it's Jetty, so... Oh, those are Jetty facing Jetty. That's, that'd be part of my recommendation. Farther north, I'm happy everything else farther north of 25th.
I noted in the written testimony, noted with, in regard to this plan, there are two requests we want to discuss.
Sure, that's what we're here to do.
One was to extend the VR zone on 38th, northwest 38, place two lots to include the address 79 northwest. That was one request.
Which lot is that, do you know, Richard, right offhand?
It's a VR currently. Marty Moody?
Can you say what, how it's described again?
Northwest 35th Street.
Here's northwest 35th.
And they request that the VR zone be extended east, two lots to include their property.
Presumably that's...
Is that 38th or 35th?
35th.
Place?
35th Place.
Right there.
I think there are lots that they own, goes between 36th and 35th Place.
So it would be this lot?
Flag lot?
Yeah.
I don't know, yeah.
They would be captured.
They would be captured if we made that decision to include it. There was a second request, going north of it, that west of Lee be taken out.
Everything what?
Two lots northwest 38.
Well, the one on northwest Lee up there, I know at least, there's already, let's see, one, I think three VRDs in there already.
So removing that one.
Northwest 38.
So west of...
There are already VRs in there, so...
West of northwest Lee, off of 39th, going to the north.
No, going to the north.
Going to the south.
Going to the south.
That was just in the written testimony. The town I said. But you're saying there are already VRDs?
Yes.
And one thing to keep in mind is that, I'm not saying it's irrelevant, but whether there's a VRD there now or not, isn't that important, because we're looking, we're zoning for, you know, 20, 50 years out, so things can change, is what I'm saying. But is this, this proposal, is it, would that be basically just moving the line here? Is that what you're talking about?
Sorry, can't see it.
A half-block west of northwest Lee?
So you're talking about everything facing Lee from the west side?
And then you said something about a couple of lots that might be...
Just...
Over here?
Request that the tanners made, I think.
To be excluded?
Excluded, non-VRD.
So you're not making any decisions at the moment, we're just clarifying what requests were made?
Right, right.
And I guess I'll point out that in the minutes, the discussion was to north of 26th, so I know you talked about 25th, but back to the other, on the lower, on the Keel area that we were just talking about.
Yeah, so it's south of 25th and north of...
Yeah, you guys just, were talking about 25th, but the minutes reflect 26th.
Yes.
Which is why I mentioned it.
Yeah, and this little block, stop a little block. You were talking about going up here and then leaving. But there's something... I didn't still know.
Do you wanna share with us, or do you have any other recommendations for that, tweaks?
Well, we're talking 26, actually, the west side of, what was that, Keel, between 25th and 26th, we can eliminate that too, I mean, there's...
But now you're...
Two residents in there, so...
It's your call.
I was just clarifying that the request at the last meeting was south of 26th.
Where was that last? Oh, there was a request between 25th and 26th, the west side of Keel.
Actually, I believe those owners were on Jetty.
Were they on Jetty?
They actually own on Jetty, at least both people that testified. They'd be in anyway, but they wouldn't have behind them anyway.
One way to approach your deliberations is rather than having a grand motion at the end, is you can do it bit by bit, and have a motion on a particular thing, and see if they're supportive of that.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Because otherwise, we're gonna get confused of this piece here and this piece there, we can actually, why don't we do, work on a motion between 26th and 21st, and that part in Keel there, and we can make a decision on that little section, then we can move north, if commissioners like to do that. Otherwise, I'm gonna get confused of what little parts we're gonna be doing. But I feel comfortable with the one between, on Keel, between 21st and 25th, I feel real comfortable about that.
Of removing that from the VR?
So removing from 21st, the 25th, west side of Keel, removing that.
But that's lots facing Keel.
If someone makes a motion to that effect, and you vote on it, then you can move on and discuss the 25th or 26th, so...
We'll make motion to remove the west side of Keel from the proposed VR zone between northwest 21st and northwest 25th.
Yeah, but that's excluding the four lots on both ends of that block.
We are saying facing Keel.
We're saying facing Keel.
Facing Keel, okay.
Doesn't have to be, it's just whatever you want your motion to be.
And you can make a separate motion on those.
Facing Keel, yeah.
Do a separate motion.
Do we have a second on that, if somebody did?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's a recommendation. Are there any other recommendations we'd like to vote on right now?
Do you wanna ask the question between 25th and 26th?
Yeah, how does everybody feel between 25th and 26th? West side of Keel? Yeah, either west, or any part of that? Why not go up to 28th then? Do we just wanna go all the way up to 28th, and everything facing Keel on the west side?
Well, then you're gonna take out all the houses on Lee, the corner now.
Where are we at, Lee?
Are those houses VRDs, are any of those at this point in time?
Trying to think where are we at.
Is it about the way it is?
These houses here.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think we'll leave that the way it is, I agree.
So what about this block between 20, I have the wrong glasses for this map, uh, let's see, 35th, 36th, that block of four, or three lots, the two small lots and the flag lot.
Up here?
35th, 36th, the flag lot.
That one, you're talking about adding that?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
I'm gonna make a...
Who was proposing that?
The Moody's were requesting that. No written testimony?
Between 35th Place and north of...
Remove the boundary of the VR zone, two lots to the east on 35th Place.
Correct. Yeah, he's got it up there on the screen pretty well marked. Richard has it figured out, it's right there, those, it's actually three lots, because one of the lots is, goes all the way through.
That's right.
Actually, it's five lots, but there's only three tax lots.
I'll move, make a motion to add those three tax lots to the VR zone.
And I'll second that motion.
Let's have a vote, we have a motion, let's have a vote. All in favor of adding those three tax lots to the proposal, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay?
No.
It carries.
Who voted no on that?
Steve Griffiths voted no.
All right, is there a next section we would like to look at next, heading north?
There are, there were discussed two lots of south of northwest 38th, excluding them. That's the two lots at the, facing 38th at the eastern extent.
These two lots, plus, I think the proposal was also the rest of...
And, yeah, okay, same proposal, remove that corner-shaped lot, or triangular-shaped lot, and the top five lots, and I don't know if that included that wide lot there in the middle. Yeah, the double-frontage lot, I don't know if the proposal included that lot.
Yeah, which, again, that's, it's one tax lot, but two lots.
But they are across the line. Right.
No, that was a separate, a separate, that, the tri, was that the triangle lot and the five lots of...
Do they own all that?
We're talking about this group here, exactly. And that, what about that one? Talking about the wide lot right there, the double-facing lot, what about that?
Actually, if I can, I can show you, this is what the proposal was. Two lots below 38th.
Mm-hmm.
Thing on the west, west side of Lee.
And what impact does that have on that, on that double tax lot, on that double-facing lot?
It would cut it in half.
Does that make sense?
Um, it, you know, it probably just depends on exactly how the houses sits, how the house sits on that property at this time. What would happen is if the house is on both, it would end up being basically whatever it's mostly on, whatever side of the line it's mostly on.
Asking for trouble there.
Yes, combined, yeah, it's one tax lot, but, yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Right, it's this lot right here.
The proposal, the proposal, the question was to split this right down the middle like that, take this whole section.
Well, we have what we have in the record at this point, so I don't...
Right.
Doesn't the record also include the whole plating database?
The fact of the matter is, if there's a lot joined agreement tying those lots, it doesn't really matter.
In the record, here it is, right here. And it looks like the house, from reading this record, it looks like the house is on the eastern half.
No, that's, would be new information, God forbid.
It's not new, because it's before, it's before you, it was before you earlier, you know, this photo was before you.
That, that actually, I believe, is as to regular residents anyway.
Pardon me?
It's not a, the one north of it is a VRD.
Whether, where particular VRDs are or aren't was not before you, so that's new information, so...
Yeah, I don't know how you split the lot either.
If zoning splits a lot, it's the larger portion of the lot that controls.
Well, actually, what it says is, it controls, but it's only, like, was it 20, or we changed that rule, didn't we? No, it was 20 feet, so the larger, plus 20 feet controls. Actually, the other one I was thinking of was lots that are divided between city and county, it's just the bigger one controls, but...
So, so if we split that, there is a rule in place to control it, to deal with it.
Say that again?
If we split that lot, there is rules in place to deal with...
Yes.
Any issues.
Well, the VR is increasing the, what they can do with the property, or increasing what they can do with half of it.
Yeah, this process doesn't take anything away from anybody, it adds things to some people. Why are we cutting in here?
We don't have a lot.
Direct line?
No. Do you wanna make one?
Because we're gonna cut the other lot.
Gentlemen, do you have an opinion about this last proposal?
I have no problem with cutting that lot. I have no problem with excluding those from the VR zone.
We'll make a motion?
Keel.
Correct, and also the two lots across?
Is it Keel?
Lee, it's Lee.
And that one lot, that includes, that includes the lot that spans both, spans the distance.
South of thirty eighth.
I thought we already voted on that one.
These two lots right here.
Didn't we already vote on that one?
No.
No.
We didn't? Oh, that's all one proposal?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move, I'll make a motion to remove those from the VR zone.
Does anybody second that? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Carries? Are there any other gerrymanderings you'd like to introduce?
There's, if I can, again, draw your attention to, um, these lots, south of twenty first street.
Oh, yes.
Um, they're not on your map, your map is cut off here at twenty first, these, again, it's general commercial, and then, uh, this is one of the ocean lake commercial zones.
Are you talking about all the, all the lots shown there in yellow?
Yeah, south of twenty first street, between, or east of, I think that's Eddy, and, uh.
They're not currently part of our, the proposal as you brought it forward to us, right?
Right.
And so, the issue is whether we would incorporate them into this.
Right.
Can we do that? The question I'd have is if we didn't notice them.
Right.
Everybody, everybody got noticed in the R one zone.
Entire R one zone was noticed.
In, in the northwest quadrant.
But they may have not known that they were part of the function if they looked at the information that was out there, so I, I'd say we don't.
Well, they're in the, they're in the same situation as, as the other ones up here that we added into the blue zone.
Or took out, but.
Or took out.
I'm fine with leaving it the way it is, which is out of the VR, out of the VR zone.
I, I guess I would recommend.
Or we don't have a discussion on it because it wasn't part of the.
Yeah, that's, that. You know, we have.
I don't want to go there.
And we may want to have that same thought with the ones up at the top that you were talking about adding in. I realize that the owner of one of those lots made that request, this is up on Fifth. Um, so one of those people said, please add me in, but there were five lots there, my understanding.
I got you.
Three tax. Three, yeah, three tax lots, one, I don't know that they're all the same person, though, that made the request.
Right.
I, I think we should look at that.
So I suggest staff, uh, look at that, and, uh, we're going to, let us know what.
Going to reverse our, uh, recommendation on those lots?
We, we have your recommendation, the question is whether or not we've sufficiently have noticed it, and we'll have to look at whether or not those lots are all owned by the same person who made the request, I mean, we may have to send note, additional notices.
And start the process over again?
Or we might have to tell them, you know, we'll, we'll add you later, so, but I'm, I'm just trying to add a little caveat that I don't want to say we're hard and fast on those added lots. And if you, if you think that the, the lots down below make sense, I think you should tell Richard that they make sense, but I, then I think we need to look at whether or not we've sufficiently noticed it.
Well, we're not, we're not making a law here, right? We're just making a recommendation for the city council.
That's, that's right.
If there's nothing, is there any more areas we want to look at?
And I like that, uh, Richard's proposal for the area south of twenty first street, myself.
I do too, I just don't even want to deal with that part.
No, put it, add them into, they're surrounded by commercial, so that, that section there below twenty first.
Kind of a large.
Again, that's north, uh, sort of like what we took out on Keel, though, those are just small residential homes.
Be addressed at the council level?
Well, anything can be addressed at the council level, but, um.
I'm just not certain how we noticed it at this point, and I'm not prepared to answer that.
But, Richard, you, you will talk to the council about that section, so we don't have to make a recommendation when we're there, they're going to hear about it.
But your recommendation is appreciated, so if you think it's appropriate, if you don't think it is, then.
Well, one of us, two of us do so far, we haven't had, made a motion yet.
Well, I can, uh, we can, we can make a motion and just put in our motion to have staff research those two areas for recommendation to council, one way or the other. Well, that's, that's why we're recommending that staff take a look at those areas to decide if notice needs to be given to them to come back to us or not.
So we'll come back.
Right. So I will make a motion to recommend to council to accept the changes that we've made and have staff research, uh, the R one properties, south of twenty first, and, uh, what was it, twenty, and the three tax lots, uh, north of twenty fifth.
Thirty fifth.
Thirty fifth.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So, are we done with this?
Now that we've, now that we've tweaked the details, do we actually want to go forward with this plan at all? We never did discuss that aspect.
Yes, I think it's time to move forward.
So you're looking for a, a motion to move to?
VR.
Right, that's what we just, that's what we just.
A motion or a discussion?
That's what we just voted on to, uh, move on to council.
We voted to move those tweaks on to council.
The whole recommendation was actually the whole thing.
I don't remember that motion.
I don't either.
Did we have a motion?
I heard, I heard it that way, but, that it.
Took it as recommended, this proposed zone with these changes and the caveat that you look at the, these two areas for inclusion, so that's what I thought the motion was.
So, so we got.
Had a, a motion that, to, to recommend to council to accept the changes, but for the areas on northwest thirty fifth and south of twenty first to research whether further notice will be required.
I agree with that.
Could you read that for me again, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
Okay, so the recommendation was, to the city council was to accept the VR zoning with the changes as discussed, but for the areas on northwest thirty fifth and the areas south of, of twenty first to research whether those areas need, uh, further notice.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So this, this item, your recommendation will be sent to the city council, and the city council is scheduled to hear this on the twenty sixth of January?
That's right.
Twenty sixth of January.
And so there'll be a public hearing on the twenty sixth of January before the city council, and comments can be submitted in writing, and they'll go out with the council packet if they're received, I think, the Wednesday before the council meeting. Um, if they're, come in after, they'll just be handed out, and you can always show up at the hearing and testify.
One quick question, did the council, are we doing this in four quadrants?
That's, that was the original proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, it may end up actually being in three, we may propose to do the east side all at once, because there's, it's.
Very little of it, is it?
Let's see, the next will be the southwest.
Uh, do we need to have a motion or a vote or anything to close deliberations?
I think your motion to make the recommendation was the close of, of, I think you took the action you're required to take under the code.
All right, the deliberations on that are closed. Moving on, um, old business, uh, there's none scheduled. New business, we have planning commission rules and procedures, annual review, goodie.
I, I really don't want to spend much time on this, except to say that there was an issue that came up recently about, uh, commissioners being in the notice area, and, um, how that takes you out of consideration, and I believe during a hearing I suggested that that wasn't really required by any Oregon statute, so I think that's.
That's, that's a planning commission, one of our own rules, correct?
It's one of your own rules, it's probably unnecessarily strict, um, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we go ahead and change this tonight, but I want your direction on, I'll write up a change if that's what you'd like to do, and I believe that's, uh.
Article six, section two, challenge for bias, item B, number two, have it removed?
Yes, uh, number two, commissioner owns property within the area entitled to receive notice, so that kind of automatically takes you out of participating. If you'd like to see that removed, provided I can't find some case or something that requires it to be in there, um, I would recommend you do that. There were two other things I would point out.
Can we just go with one at a time here?
Sure.
I would recommend that we remove that, that article, because it, it's presuming a bias because you live in that area. It, it's automatically saying that somehow, as being a resident of an area, you're automatically biased one way or another, which I, I can't presume that.
Yeah, I agree, he's.
A resident of an area makes you a biased person.
There's usually a, a class.
Yes.
Exemption, and it's also one of the, it's mentioned in these rules as well, if you're affected the same way other people in the area are affected, then you're a member of a class. I think your rule says something about the class has to have at least six people in it. But generally, that's a Oregon Ethics Commission rule, uh, they're the only ones that can say you're a member of a class, I can't tell you, but we pretty much can guess that, you know, you're a member of a class, um, cases have gone that way.
I think this rule also could keep us from doing our work, for example, I think four votes are needed for any zoning change, and if it comes to the southwest quadrant, and if four of us are, have residence and live in the southwest quadrant, we couldn't vote on that issue, there'd be no action taken.
That's right, it's, it's kind of a artificial rule that I think that if someone had a bias challenge, they could get up and say, you know, you've made forty-four public statements, uh, saying this, and it's all in the newspaper, and here's my evidence, but when you just assume something based on where you live, that's probably not good evidence.
And we would still have the right to, to stand up ahead of time and say, I feel biased about this.
Of course. And, and in fact, the other members could say, we think despite what you say, you're biased.
And the audience.
And the audience, yes.
I, I would like to see you do diligence on that, find out if it's, if we're allowed to drop that rule, please.
Unless I can find something to the contrary, you're, the, you know, unanimous consent would be, get rid of it.
Is that unanimous? Yes, well.
Yeah, I've, I've got no problem with it.
Do we need to motion on this, or?
I think unanimous consent, basically, the chair says something, and then if you all, nobody objects, that's going to be unanimous consent.
That's fine.
How's your time?
Next.
You had two other things, Richard?
Items.
There are a couple other things that, um, as I was reading through it today, I thought, um, we should update a little bit, and, um, maybe I can bring them when we come back with the new language. Um, one is that it talks about filing special reports, um, keeping them in a special file, and, um, you know, a lot of our things are electronic now, and we keep electronic records, so, uh, I thought that might need a little updating. Uh, and another one was, we don't require people to state their address when they speak at a public hearing now, and it says in here that they should state their address, so we should maybe clarify that they should give, keep their address, they want to be notified of the results, so.
I thought we talked, not having people state their address.
That's what.
That's right.
And that's what we're saying, is we need to change the rules because the rules still say, say that. Um, I had, uh, two other issues about, uh, planning commission interpretations and staff interpretations. Um, you know, measure fifty six says, you know, land use rules and regulations are supposed to be done by ordinance, so I have a lot of reservation about having a file of staff interpretations of the code. There's, if you interpret, um, a criterion in your code, you do it in the context of a decision, so someone comes in and they ask for an approval, and one of the conditions are, one of the criteria, you cannot negatively impact the livability of the neighborhood, let's just say, that's one of your land use criterion. Well, and you have to interpret that, and you do that in your written order, when you approve the final order, we set forth what that criterion is, and we try to define it as best we can. The livability of the surrounding area, the surrounding area is the area that received the notice, the, we define it as we're doing that interpretation, then you vote on that final order, and that becomes your interpretation. So that's one way where your interpretation becomes law, it's not binding the same way an ordinance is, but it certainly tells people the way you interpret something. The other way to do it is to just say, you know what, this, this particular criterion is just too vague, we need to define it further, so livability in the surrounding area, let's just write right into the code. Surrounding area for purposes of this criterion will be an area one thousand feet from the subject property, so you, you give us direction, and then by ordinance, we put that into the code. That's state law, you don't do land use by anything other than ordinance. So in an individual decision, you do it in the written order, that's acceptable, but if you're going to make a rule, you don't have a file of interpretations, you put it in the code, um, if you're, you know, you don't just consult it later, you put it in the code, so, um, and we can certainly keep track of your final orders and that have interpretations in them and make them available for people if we have, uh, recurring requests for, um, reconstruction of, uh, signs that have, you know, fallen down, um, and we've had a couple hearings, and it's pretty clear that the way that you interpret the existing code is going to result in the denial, we could keep a file of those so people can look at them, but we can also go ahead and amend the code and make clear, which I think you guys had actually even suggested, that we maybe clear up this, this section and add some language to the code.
Richard, and I probably way off base here, are you talking about when we get a final order before us and we're voting on that, that this is something we could include as a reference in the final order?
Well, what I'm suggesting is, we don't just have interpretations that are just hanging out there in a vacuum, when we have interpretations, we do them one of two ways, we do them in a final order, or we say, you know what, let's add this language into the code as a text amendment to the code.
So we do it before the final order?
Or in addition.
In addition, usually, the way I'd see it happening is, you've made a certain interpretation as part of a, a final land use decision, a final order on, on a sign, right, reconstruction request, and now, you know, you want people to know that the code really means this, and people keep coming in and asking for the same thing, and then we have to have the same hearing over again, and you make the same findings, so the more, more efficient thing for us to do is see if there's a way we can amend the code to make it more clear, so.
And that, and that wouldn't?
I'm sorry.
Then that wouldn't eliminate us, uh, if we disagreed with the final order, to add our disagreements in as a note on the final order?
Well, right now, you're required to, if you disagree, to state the reasons why you disagree, and we're supposed to put that in the final order.
Okay.
But eventually, the, the majority will rule, and if we amend the code in a text amendment, you know, you're, it will be a record that you objected, but eventually, if, if a majority agrees, we'll change the code. So my, all that rambling is about, three and four need to be fixed.
Okay.
Uh, in, in section eight, and so I'd suggest, uh, you give me direction to go ahead and, and correct those.
Is there something else you had to, I was curious, there was something I brought up last meeting about, um, if we change the recommendation from staff, instead of rewriting the whole thing, it would be reflected in the minutes? the whole thing, it would be reflected in the minutes?
Are we talking about...
Oh, you're right.
Final orders on recommendations?
Right, right.
Yes, and I think that was actually in the code. There was a difference of opinion between what's in your rules and what's in the code. And the code says the minutes reflect your recommendation on a, on a thing that has a recommendation, whereas you can read these rules to say, well, no, you got to do a written piece of paper. And it's like, yeah, but the minutes are written and approved by you and they have everything that's required by what's in your rule. But so I, I think, I can't remember exactly where that is, but if you want to give me direction to make these rules consistent with that rule in your code, I'll do that as well.
Mr. Chair, I would like to give Richard direction to do that.
Please do.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I'll second that.
And Debra, you had a couple things you wanted to put in next meeting, too?
Well, wait, let's just, let's just...
Fine.
Well, I think we're just giving, we're just sort of unanimously giving Richard direction to proceed with that.
So on the, the issue with the correction on the recommendation, you have unanimous consent there?
Yes.
And then the issue about we don't do interpretations in a vacuum and can I have dispensation to fix these two sections?
Article three and article four.
Article three and article four and section eight.
Section three and four.
Yes.
So unanimous consent on that?
Yes.
And Debra had some language issues with...
And yes, go ahead with that, please, Debra.
Okay, the ad, for the people testifying and also I just want to take a look at the section that talks about how we file the results of our public hearings and special report, I think it's special reports section in article eight.
Yes.
Just to see, make sure that's up to date.
I noticed that was...
So do we have unanimous consent on those as well?
Yes, this will be in our next meeting packet.
We'll do our best.
I've got another question of staff, may, I was concerned about parking in VRD areas under the current code that basically grandfathers whatever, whatever, whatever into it. Is there a way to put a sunshine or a sunset thing on, off-street parking?
Are you concerned that there's too much or there's too little?
My concern is that I, I think I've seen VRDs that have no, absolutely no way to park off the street at the VRDs, is that, and maybe it was pre-existing code or...
I don't think there are any that lawfully don't have off-street parking, they're required to have at least two off-street parking spaces, or a minimum of two, but at least one per bedroom.
Okay, and that's, no matter what, I mean, there's no code that says that this VRD was grandfathered in from 1892?
I can't think of any that would have been...
No, in fact, it's the opposite, there's, Richard has reduced occupancy, told people they have to close off their bedrooms...
If they don't have parking.
If they don't have sufficient onsite parking.
Yeah, okay. Because I heard that.
Was, is that a VRD rule or just a residential zone rule?
It's a rule for VRDs.
There is, there is, the council did say that if there is lawful street parking, it's not illegal for, for guests of VRDs to park in legal parking places.
Sure.
And it kind of puts the burden on Public Works to make sure that where parking isn't legal, like signs that say, no parking this side of the street, to get those signs out there and make sure that, you know, people aren't illegally parking.
But I, I felt I had heard conversation where people were concerned about all of the illegal parking when, you know, the VRDs are being used and I was concerned that maybe there was instances where they didn't even have off-street parking available at that VRD, but you're telling me that's not the case at all?
Yeah, that's not the case. And there are occasions when like somebody will have a gathering at a VRD where it's more than just the people that are staying in there, so you'll have, you will have impact on on-street parking.
I don't have a problem with part-time, I just don't want it permanent.
And dwelling units all have to, are supposed to have two parking spaces, single family.
I just wanted to point out, and this happened at your last meeting and it happened again tonight, that under public forum, under the opportunity for people to address you on any subject, you had people talk to you about matters in which the record and the hearing had closed. Now, at your last meeting, that happened in the context of a very, you know, quasi-judicial application. And then tonight, it happened in the context of a legislative that has, you know, implicated, it has some quasi-judicial character depending on, you know, if you're one of the owners a lot. And I really, I, we don't jump up and go tackle people when they start talking because under the Oregon Constitution, you know, people have their freedom to speak on any subject and we've created a public forum and we allow people to speak on any subject, but at your last meeting, you had what I considered procedural error occur because you had someone talk to you about a matter in which the hearing was closed and the record was closed and it was quasi-judicial and there were other people that I'm sure, it happened to be the applicants that were speaking, but I'm sure there were opponents of that project that may want to have, to have gotten up and have talked to you as well. And the hearing was closed and the record is closed and because of that, I asked the council if they wanted to call up that particular item and they have called up that item. So it will be redone at the city council, so any procedural error will be wiped away because it's a de novo hearing as if nothing had happened before. The only thing I can suggest is, and we should probably just look at this again in terms of your procedures and the order on the agenda, is we perhaps need to have our deliberations on the same night so we don't have people coming up out, you know, at the next meeting and addressing you before you can get to your deliberations. Or we move the public forum to later in the meeting so you've already had your discussion. And I need to look at your rules to see if you've got, like the council has rules about the order of proceedings, I think it would take an ordinance amendment to change that.
And we have the opportunity for the public to speak, a second time to speak at the end, so after our deliberations, then it won't matter if they speak about it or not.
Yes, and they can vent their, their feelings and express themselves and exercise their constitutional right to speak on any subject, but not create an error for your, you know, decision. So I, it's just something I just want to alert you to, I'll look at, trying to find a way to fix this problem, so.
That's number six, public comments on non-agenda items.
Yes.
Would you please look at that, that's been uncomfortable twice now.
Take it number nine.
Not just before you, but before the city council repeatedly.
Well, yeah, I, I think if we could move that, that item past the public hearings, that would be very useful.
But on the other hand, a lot of times, people don't want to stick around for all our meetings and we've been here till 10 o'clock before and I don't want to have somebody that has a two-sentence...
We're offering them the opportunity to speak.
At the front and the back?
No.
No.
We're offering them the opportunity to speak at a public hearing.
Well, that's why we have public comments on non-agenda items on 11.4, after our deliberations are done.
Non-agenda items.
That they could, if they want to...
Yeah, I, my point is that during a public hearing, you hear people speak. During the order of proceedings, you ask those in favor, those opposed, and we have an order and we, we had a hearing on the item we had deliberations on tonight, we had it at the last meeting, and there's an order. You hear from those people that signed up to speak. And then the record, the hearing closed, you made a motion, closed the hearing, you made a motion, closed the record. Now we're done taking evidence and testimony, we're not hearing anymore, but in many proceedings before this body and before the city council, we provide a public forum where people can get up and speak on any subject and they get up and they start talking about items where the hearing is closed and the record is closed and create error in the decision. Now, it's not as significant in the legislative process, but in the quasi-judicial process, it's substantive error. And so in order to try to not have that happen, I don't want to punish people, but in a sense, maybe we need to have them wait until the end so we don't have that error occur.
Would we be better off leaving the hearing open rather than closing it?
But we have to, all things must end. We'll never get to go home if we can't close the hearing.
We have a non-agenda item comments before we start our meeting and then we could have an open forum after our meeting that they can make comments?
I...
Well, that's what we have now, isn't it?
We, we ask people not to talk about items where the record is closed and the hearing is closed and they're doing it anyway and they're standing on the Oregon Constitution.
We're not, we're not standing up as firm and saying...
Yes, but, but...
How are you going to do? Don't you finger...
Well, I, I do not want to have the chairman say, you're out of order, you're in contempt and try to stop people from talking because then we're going to have people saying, my constitutional right to speak and it's like, well, but you're creating error. Everyone has the right to speak on any subject, they're responsible for abuse of that right. So if you get up and you create a procedural error or a substantive error, that's the consequence of your abuse of that right to speak, you've created an error. And then in the case where, you know, you get up and spoke and now the item has to have a new de novo hearing, there's cost involved.
I'm uncomfortable with that, just, I mean, and I think we can be more forceful on not, you know, this is non-agenda items, anything that's on the agenda that's closed, you can't talk about. But I have a real problem with, you know, trying to limit somebody's speaking on other subjects before us when we haven't given them the opportunity because, you know, we don't meet that often, they make a time commitment to come here, I think we owe them the courtesy to listening to what they say on non-agenda items. If they want to stick around and have comments on things after we've had our discussions and we've closed things, we've had our vote, that's fine, I'll listen.
I agree with you, but I, I don't know how we stop them from...
Well, in this case, couldn't we have said, you're talking about, you're talking about an item we're deliberating on, hold your comments, you're welcome to come up and talk after we close the deliberation.
I guess we could have suggested that as a, as maybe a kindler, kinder, gentler way of, of doing it. We'd still, I mean, they, I did kind of say that.
Yeah.
Right.
And they said, I, I'm going to talk anyway.
I'm going to talk anyway.
And, and I'm not going to tackle someone and stop them. I don't want to end up in federal court or state court because they said I was exercising my constitutional right, so...
Two weeks ago, the person with the request in front of us was talking, doing the exact same thing.
Yes, and...
And I thought that was very offensive because that should have opened up the debate for everybody else.
Or that, that was why I told the city council, I think that was error and I think that you should call it up and have a de novo hearing to cure that error.
Right, right.
I, I recognize it's difficult, I've been struggling with how do we fix this and I just brought it up as an issue for discussion, so...
What you said is basically if we were to close off every hearing and then make the decision instead of letting the decision ride for two more weeks to the next meeting, then we avoid this.
Wait, I...
Because they've had their opportunity to talk.
When we can.
When, yeah.
Stick it in the middle after we have our hearing.
Or, or when we can avoid it, maybe not have the open discussion until we have deliberated and made our decision.
Then we have procedures where we, one time we have the hearing with the open forum ahead of time and then when we have it closed, something off, we have a discussion afterwards, open discussion afterwards.
Perhaps flexibility in, in moving the public forum around to avoid...
That possibility.
Creating error.
That might be a good idea, any open deliberations we have, we'll just move the public comments after.
Right, anytime we have an open...
But not, so not to the end of the meeting, just...
After that.
After that's closed.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at some language, see if we can fix that.
Okay.
Well, we were, annual review, reports and comments, community development director?
Just a couple of things, there has been, some people have wanted some explanations of the, the three VRD ordinances that were passed, 2014, days 21, 22, and 23, there's a lot of confusion, a lot of misinformation out there. And staff has prepared a summary of the, of the three ordinances and that's been posted on the city's website, on the homepage, under current news. There's, there's two things, one is, is the summary of the three ordinances and then there's also a frequently asked questions document as well, so there's, there's two things there to try to get more complete information out about those, those matters. And the other thing, as, as Mr. Appicello mentioned, the city council has called up the, your decision on Logan Park PUD and will be considering that on the 26th of this month.
Thank you, Richard. City attorney. Planning commissioners, any reports and comments?
I have none.
I've got one and it's, it's a request I've made before. Can we look at, at some point, the amount of commercial and industrial property we have available in the city? And I think, and I'll kind of follow up on that because from my understanding, we're really getting down on those type of areas and I want to see if there's something we can do to, you know, facilitate that a little more easy.
We can bring that information to you?
When you anticipate bringing to the planning commission the next two zones, VR zones, the one...
Um, possibly in late February, maybe, but more likely March.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
I'm just thankful that Bruce stepped up to be chair.
I, I wanted to comment about how good those cookies were at the last meeting. All right, public comment on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Future agenda items and the next meeting, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 20th, 2015.
And there's nothing on the agenda yet, but that's not to say that there won't be, so it's, it's possible we'll let you know that there's nothing and if you want to cancel it, but I don't want to cancel it yet.
Can we give a five-day notice so we can kind of juggle our schedules and we'll do our best, yes?
All right. Air adjourned.